Let's open the April twenty-third meeting of the Town of Rutland Planning Board. First order of business is, is minutes?
Make a motion except the minutes of April ninth. I didn't have any comments. Second?
I have found nothing.
Yeah, it looked fine to me.
Okay. Make a motion in a second. Any other comments, questions?
Just a question, and this is something I don't know. For the support of a citizen's petition, did we vote, did we do an official vote of that? Do we, can we undo that? Is that something the board can do? I don't know, Norm. That's the only question I got. Can we undo a vote? Is that possible?
Yeah, I believe we can.
Okay, good enough. I just, I didn't know if we could. I have a, I have something that'll be for the less than forty-eight hour notice.
Any other questions, comments, and minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm having a problem keeping myself organized here. Okay. Next is a special liquid, wow. Special permit request for an extension from Central Oil, the guy in there, car wash. Apparently in two years is up at this point, and they are looking for an extension.
Yeah, I heard through the grapevine that Brian's trying to acquire, remember that property that was the churches that he wanted to use? Oh, that is, that's what It's down here and I missed it? I got
Yep, it's an A and R.
I will shut my mouth and not say another word.
You're open for discussion on it yet?
Yep.
Why the thin line? Is that gonna be access, if you look on the A and R? Is that access to the back property? It just seemed rather unusual. Why not just make the, you know, one solid line? It's a border, but if it is, then the, I would say that's more than, not enough for a an easement to get out back.
I don't, I don't
I didn't, I don't remember him saying anything about it, but it just seems very unusual to have such a narrow
That's a hell of a slope there, if I remember right.
It is a heck of a slope.
There's no way, unless you got a four by four, you're not going, and even that's a bowling situation.
No, they could have a rail, you know, they're gonna
Yeah.
Send a different type of
I think based on this A and R where it says gravel access driveway between the dotted lines?
Yeah.
That's what they were looking to do.
To get in, but the banking was, seems to me there was something about the banking, they were gonna cut it back a little bit to make more room for the vacuums that they were gonna be setting up.
That was where that parcel A was gonna be.
Yes.
But the problem is it was owned by the diocese.
Right.
So
However, we're talking about extending the special permit at this point, that's all.
Yeah, I, I'll make a motion that we extend the permit.
For how long? Two years?
I believe the request was for six months, Norm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, he only asked for six months.
Well, then let's leave it at six. And no, at two years.
I would do two years, even though he asked for six months, I'd extend it by two years.
You don't know what's gonna come in the future.
See any harm in that?
Yep.
Yeah, so so, so two years would be three eight, twenty twenty-six? Okay.
That is your motion, Dick?
That is my motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have Yep, that's the same property. We have an A and R which basically is buying a strip of land from the church. I guess specifically the Roman Catholic Bishop of Springfield.
Oh, not Boston.
Is that in the back here? Is that the, oh, that's the one behind it. Oh, okay, sorry. Four main.
So it sounds like they actually paid part of the church property at some time.
Yeah, it overlaps the line.
That thin line, I believe, is denoting the paved area.
Is that what it is?
Oh, yeah, because that goes around back where the asphalt is. And then that banking, that stone banking is everything to the left of that thin line.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And I can tell you what that easement's for.
Yeah?
That'd be the pole from National Grid. I guarantee you what that's what that is. Grid asks for an easement. Or there was one existing and they wanna leave it that way.
So they're gonna probably do construction there, like you said, if they're putting in
I would imagine.
Expanding the term.
There's like a sloping wall in now, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, they could easily put in a, what do you call, retaining wall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty blocked wall.
Yep, and then, then they'd have room to put in the air dryers and vacuums.
Vacuums, yeah.
I'm okay with this. I don't see any and this takes into account the new road that the state's putting in? Cause this looks like
Judging by, it looks like it does go out beyond it.
Yeah, see that's
See how it curls out?
Yeah.
The only reason I've asked that is because I think the state's road is a little bit farther back than this drawing, but it's, is it stamped?
No.
Yeah, we'll bring lands for Bruce Wilson. Okay, yeah. I mean, again, even if we sign this, if there's something wrong with the drawing, it's not on us, cause we didn't stamp this drawing.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I'm okay with this, cause I really want Brian and the kids to get this in.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a huge advantage to Rutland. So I don't have to drive that far to get the car washed. No more going into Holden, no more paying the, the special fees. Keep the money in house.
So I heard your motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Nope. Looks good to me.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, get a sign on this good stuff. Get a sign on the above, Norm? You gonna sign these under ones?
Yeah.
All right. This sign in the second position, then this one over.
We'd be a space. We don't have to
Sign Dick Williams again. légitimally voting names. Charles Richard parentheses Dick Williams. Dick, you gotta pull some of your old signs out, put them in my yard.
Listen, today uh, make sure you
Yeah, put it in the bag.
Missed it when I had to go around and try to find that thing.
I don't know where you found that, yeah.
Is it, is that what I think it is? From, from the interview, okay. I saw it earlier.
I also found paperwork and a thing from the Holland Land Act where my father and I had a conversation, it was a a woman that used to come around Rutland. That for crying out loud, and I said, oh. And I'm still around? Oh, it must've been pretty young back then.
I still have your dad's Husqvarna brush cutter that's got the the book that came with it, it's got the click that was sold to Chet Oliver and then came back to you, and it's got your dad's signature at the bottom for the warranty card. I was like, I'm gonna take this to Dick and make him fix this for free.
Yeah, free, yeah. Somebody tried to, hey, Dick, I got the saw I bought when you closed up, and I said, that's, that's eleven years ago, man, the warranty is
Well, this, this thing's forty-two years old and it still runs like a champ. Those sweets knew how to make equipment.
Okay.
Next one is the one that's got a lot of
Next one, Norm? Yeah, I noticed all the paperwork in here that this thing is already zoned. Why is it trying to be rezoned again?
It was never sent to the Attorney General's office, Dick, so we never got
I say we open the hearing up first.
Okay, so you
Okay, so this is a public hearing. To consider any rezoning app of the Town of Rutland for a property on Intervale Road from resident sixty-two, low industrial
Did you know, I think I hear Paul DeRozan rolling over in a grave.
I have a pile of paper here from the ninety-two from when Paul did this the first time.
Yep.
It's a, it's a vacant piece of land that is adjacent to and under common ownership with the old Heel Company. And isn't, the Heel Company's own industrial
Heel, like the
It's, no, it's Wooden heel.
Oh, I was like, I thought
Granier Wooden Heel Company, and that's the wooden heel. And what it is, it's for ladies' high heel shoes, is what they made in that place for years. And not only that, that's when I at about six or seven years old, went up to get sawdust, and my father's in the back shoveling, and I'm sitting in the thing on the windows of the truck. And this woman comes around the corner with big red lipstick on it. Hi, Dick! That's the last time I went there, for crying out loud, for many years.
Did she squeeze, did she squeeze the
No, because I, I flattened out. I was never so sure. It was Mrs. Granier, Eleanor Granier. But anyways, yes, I knew a few people that worked in there, and that's what it was, and if they had bad ones, they'd throw them out, and we'd go up there and pick them up and use that in the kitchen wood stove. So, that's what that is, wooden heel.
What are they
Would go probably like that. Pine.
Really?
Yeah.
Cheap stuff.
Light.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't want it. Yep. But that was, that was something.
Wow.
Yeah. So, little bit of history, that's all.
So, so the Heel Company's own industrial and has been, which predate zoning back to the forties, the parcel to the south is also industrial.
Yeah.
And this was, I think, for a long time, thought to be industrial, but was then officially changed in the early nineties by Paul. However, that documentation, when we're digging around the town hall, we could never find. And the reason we couldn't find it is because the part of changing zoning is it has to go to the Attorney, Massachusetts Attorney General's Office.
Yeah.
And they call it the Municipal Law Division. They review it to make sure it complies with Mass General Law. And that's any zoning or by law change. They then respond and that official response to the clerk is
Sorry. Triggers the change with the assessor.
Triggers, triggers the legal change, really.
Then goes to the assessor if there's any change for costs or anything like that.
Well, this has always been assessed as industrial, because it was always thought to be industrial. So incorrectly assessed. But what happened was it was a special meeting in ninety-two, and it looks like, from what we can find, it either never went to the Attorney General's Office, or the paperwork was lost, or never came back. We couldn't find anything at the town clerks, so we're still that door is still open, we're still, we could resubmit the stuff from the nineties to the Attorney General's Office with Anita. But we thought this might be an easier and quicker process, just in case, we didn't wanna miss town meeting. So the thought was if we could get a positive recommendation from the planning board and a positive vote at town meeting, it would save a lot of trouble with the town clerk and the Attorney General. And if for some reason that process didn't succeed, we wouldn't have to wait another year for a town meeting. That's kinda how we ended up here in front of you. Somewhat at the last minute before town meeting.
You guys working out of the building? Is that where you guys store everything?
Well, it's always, it's always been, you know, industrial use
Yeah.
Throughout. Currently, it's not quite fully utilized, but it's
Says, says like Kappa Corporation, is that you guys, or is that? You want that, okay. What kinda stuff goes on there, or on the
Well, currently, yeah. Currently, it's, it's been vacant for a little while, but it's been construction
Storage kinda stuff.
Since, what, the eighties?
Oh, yeah.
Until, let's see woodworking. Yeah, right up, right up till, I think, even six months ago, there was equipment there still.
Yeah. I think it was earlier than that, a little bit earlier than that.
It, I, I didn't start, I was still working in Holden when they moved up here, so it could've been before that.
Yeah.
We still had the little shop at the, at the mill there.
Yeah, the old man and Tony Cottone owned Holden Mill Works, right next to, and I can't remember his name, the partner of Paul's, and Carl, thank you. And I can remember his father was there when I, when I was fairly young. Always wondered why he started the outdoor fireplace. What are you trying to do? Middle of summer. I'm heating the atmosphere. On the beat. I loved it, I loved it. Great. Anyways.
Is this getting placed on the warrant?
Yeah.
Oh.
It has to, because it's a citizen's petition.
I thought they closed the warrant.
So I know
This was all submitted when the warrant was still open.
Oh.
So I did it the exact same way, I just did the Maple Ave parcel, it's just this didn't make it in time for your last meeting agenda.
Okay.
And the advertisement.
So we have until Friday to get the warrant posted, so we held off on posting the warrant until tonight's meeting, so that if the board made a recommendation, we could include it on the warrant when it's posted.
I'm going with no action, just because I don't want the citizen's petitions to be supported by the planning board. I just don't think it's right, cause I just don't. It's my opinion. I think there's a process. I just, again, it's, I, I guess I'm putting that as a rule across the board for citizen's petitions, cause the FICOM they supposedly, again, this is just why I ask a question, they don't their rule of thumb is when citizen's petitions come up, they take no action. They don't say no, they don't say yes, just no action, so it's no support. That's my opinion.
No recommendation.
No recommendation, that's what I wanted to basically say. No recommendation. If somebody personally asked me, I'd say yes, I'm, I'm all for it. But I just don't think the board should be on citizen's petitions. It's my opinion.
On some things, I could probably see that. Where this thing has been right along.
Zone correctly.
And
I actually have a planning board recommendation from the nineties, too.
Yeah, that's different.
Talk, we talked last time about being consistent, but that doesn't mean that we owe the same answer every time.
Correct.
And I think we should really consider
That can be sweet.
No offense, a little bit of a workaround, where we just get a couple signatures, and then all of a sudden it's on the docket.
Yeah.
Where it didn't come to us, nobody had talked about it, we hadn't reviewed it, it's just one man's personal opinion, I'm one guy. I'm not comfortable with that. I think there should be more of a process, more of a discussion. You get ten, ten signatures, and all of a sudden you do whatever you want. Especially if you're, oh, well, we're right next to the zoning. We're right next door. There's a lot of people that would benefit from a zoning change that are right next door. And at what point does that get out of control? Where it's like, oh, well you know, I'm right here, you, you gave it to him, you gave it to him twice. I'm right next door.
You're talking about the precedent.
Yeah.
And that's where, that's where my struggle is.
And, and precedent is a big deal, but at the same time, it's, you know, we had talked about being consistent, and we should be, but we should, should always be able to take new information and then adjust from there. And my opinion on that is, when we had voted in approval of the last one, we didn't realize there was more coming down the pipe. And it's like, okay, well, that's, that's an easy workaround, let's do that. Just one man's opinion, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the way that went, and then all of a sudden it's the next one. And then where's the next one?
Would we give you a favorable recommendation on Maple? Yes, and just, just to respond a little bit, it's not it's not a
That's why I'm
backdoor, this process is defined by Mass General Law.
Exactly, and you absolutely are legally able to do that.
We're not just here because we're seeking the endorsement, we're here because a zoning change is legally required to go to the planning board prior to town meeting.
But you have also, in many statements, requested our approval.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think a zoning change the, the recommendation from the planning board goes a long way at town meeting when it comes to zoning, and I think that's what the
Don't disagree.
Town looks for.
And I'm, I'm not saying that I'm against what you're proposing, I'm, what I am saying is I believe in the process. And that's just one man's opinion.
I, I guess the way I am kinda thinking of it is that this is maybe something that we should have a policy on that we follow routinely. Which we do not at this point. I'm gonna suggest that we should, very definitely, and, you know, I can, I can see the point of not giving a recommendation. Probably with a reason. In, in other words, you know, I'm standing and saying the planning board makes no recommendation due to the fact that this is a citizen's petition.
That's Norm, what, that's what I'm like. Now, if, if you asked me as Tim Narwhal, the standoff from one forty-nine Palm Augustus, I'd say, I agree with this, the citizen's petition. But as a board member, I just can't do it. I just, I can't. Um, but personally, I think, A, the town fell down, but not doing the paperwork, that's on the town. But as the board, I just, I, I'm not, I, I, I agree with everything Britton said, and it's the process that I'm struggling with, cause you're right, this petition is a legal Mass General Law way, but I just think it's a workaround that I don't think this board has to live with. Let me rephrase that. This board doesn't have to recommend, that's probably a better way of saying it.
I think it gives you a little flexibility, too, because if you don't agree with the zoning change, you can certainly recommend against.
But I, I wouldn't even do that, even if I disagree with it, cause it's a citizen's petition. I think the board should just basically take a no recommendation, and let the town decide what they want, because it's a citizen's petition.
I would agree with that.
Isn't that the function of the planning board, and the reason Mass General Law sends it to the planning board prior to
But that's, that's also the reason Mass General Law has a workaround. It's not because, none, none of these gentlemen required
Why is this considered a workaround?
It's not a workaround, it's, it's your legal right. So workaround may be the wrong word, but we don't have to endorse it.
No, I totally agree. We're, we're here
The purpose of the public hearing is simply to hear the public.
Right.
Not necessarily to give a recommendation.
So, so to sort of
You certainly don't have to, but I think it
Yeah.
Right.
We're correcting a mistake that was made thirty years ago.
A mistake is personal opinion. I don't think it was a mistake. We have zoning now, you have one lot next to the zoning, and you want that lot
The town meeting voted this industrial.
Right.
Okay.
So I don't think it was
But it didn't get to the, to the Attorney General.
Didn't get through what it needed to get through, so And, and there is a, there is a second way of approaching this, by resubmitting this to the state, correct?
Oh, to correct this?
Yes.
Yeah, but we're, we'd be submitting thirty-year-old paperwork to
I get it.
Attorney General, and we may not be able to find the telegram
I could wouldn't get it. Yeah.
The telegram
That's why they need our approval.
Not too late, we're just in the process. And, and there's no guarantee that the Attorney General will approve thirty-year-old paperwork.
Yeah.
It's just side comments, but it does look like the town's rezoned a lot of stuff in town, you know, maybe regardless of whether anyone's endorsed it, so it's not uncommon for, it looks like it happened a lot. And for them, to make them that better for the town and stuff, so
There's a lot of spot zoning, Keith, that I, again, I wasn't around and on the board when that happened.
Yeah.
I don't agree with it.
Yeah, it's hard to say what each one of these are, but it looks like they happen a lot.
Oh, I won't disagree with you, I know. I know in the eighties and what I've seen, even even the nineties, there was some spot zoning that went on.
Yes. And I'm kinda glad that, that it happened.
And, and I'm sure when zoning first came into effect, there was probably a rush
Yeah.
by a lot of people.
True.
You know, hey, I own mine's own business, I want mine's own business.
Yep.
And I mean, if it, if it doesn't pass, we're, we have a residential parcel in between two industrial pieces. Really not one
Well, we're not here to pass or fail, so
I understand that, but I'm saying if it doesn't pass, the town
That is what it is.
And, and right next to you was Hat Stat, was it?
Yep.
And he had a sawmill that he picked up from Billy Zottley.
Yeah, that's a pretty good-sized piece of industrial land.
Yeah.
Is, you, you said the, is it the house? I'm, you know, I, I looked at it real quick, but you got the two things on the side, but you, it's really the house that you're talking about rezoning?
No. So the, if you're looking at the capital garage
Yeah.
Most of the land to the left is actually on a separate parcel. But it's been under common ownership, common operation for decades.
Forever, yeah.
That piece of land was never zoned industrial. Because the old Heel Company was on a separate deeded parcel that predated zoning, and when zoning came around, that piece was industrial. The vacant land was not. So that was, attempted to be corrected in the nineties. Which we just talked about. And the piece directly to the south of it
That's the one we're talking
is also industrial. I, so it's, it's, it's been effectively used as industrial for decades.
Yeah. I guess to, you know, say, say I guess to, you know, say, say, when things play out or whatever, when you go to the town meeting, you can obviously state. Your case within most of those five minutes or whatever it takes, and I, I wouldn't see why people would be upset about, or reject your offer. You know, I wouldn't really.
No, I just think they look strongly to this.
Yeah.
This board, that's why we're here.
Yep.
Any more questions, comments? I'll accept the motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Well, Britton, I was just to close the hearing.
Oh.
Not the recommendation.
Aye.
Okay, I will accept the motion for something.
I guess I'll make a motion for a no recommendation on this. Citizen's petition. For, apologize, let me get, for Intervale Road rezoning.
I will second that.
I have a motion and I have a second. Once again, discussion.
Could I say something, or is it too late? I just, I'm nervous now of. How this is gonna look on town meeting floor when I have one positive recommendation and one with no recommendation.
I'd stick around. They don't reelect me. Before, yeah, no. I'd stick around at the end of the meeting before you, uh.
I'll just try to look out for.
I know, but.
Oh, I, I, I know what Tim is, is trying to do. I've got, I've got too much involved in this young age and everything else, and. Especially with the. Anyways, uh. I feel that the planning board, because this is something that happened with the town. Not following up and things like that, that we should be on board with this.
Trying to think of there's some way we can bounce this around.
I would think that if that was put in there, it would. Make the planning board sound like they're, you know, backing up a, a situation where the attorney general didn't receive it, and. We're trying to get the town to back in, who's race on this particular plot of land.
And, and this is just me for the process. Couldn't the, um. Hold on a second, let me make sure I got this. Uh, the town clerk stand up and say, hey, the town made a mistake. I mean, they, they could actually come up and, um, say that, we, it doesn't need us to say that, because Anita's still here.
Right.
And say, listen, we made a mistake, and, um, we is, I mean, Austin could say, we, we think that this should be corrected. The board doesn't need to say that.
That's right, that's what I'm.
That's what I'm getting at. That's the reason why I said no recommendation, cause I really, I think this should be an administrative. Support of this, not a board support. That's my opinion.
Ah, that's, that's looking good now. I like, I like that.
I like that.
I like that.
And, 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 please, I'm not throwing Anita under the bus by any means, I just think that Austin or Anita could, could say that, you know, there was an administrative mistake.
Yeah.
We think it should be corrected, and that's, I think that'll go a long way with the town basically saying. It's my opinion.
Yeah.
I personally don't think that there was a mistake made. I think we have to take new information all of the time and then decide based on. That new information. We shouldn't be held to a decision that we once made. Even if it was two weeks ago. We've had conversations since then, we've looked at what's been presented. We realize that things are changing, things are getting thrown at us constantly. Um, we see a trend. I think the board is absolutely one hundred percent, and I will say this at a legal, at a legal level. We can change positions. On our thoughts, so long as we act concurrent with the bylaws and what we're required to decide on from the town of Rullin. If we don't like, or we don't. Have a thorough process or an understanding of someone who presents a citizen's petition, we do not have, we have three options. Support, we don't support, or no action. We're not required to say, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, well, okay, great. You know, let's, let's support it because we did ten times ago. We don't have to do that.
Yeah, but didn't we ask also a citizen petition to turn it over to the planning board? On Glenwood Road?
Well.
Again, different decision.
Yeah, what we tried to tell, when, when they brought a citizen, and this, this is Britton about three or four years ago. When they were bringing citizens petitions and it got shot down, we mentioned to them the process of going through the bylaw subcommittee. And, and getting that updated on the bylaw, and so we gave them a process of what to do. And they, if I'm not mistaken, that came through the bylaw subcommittee. Again, the reason I say it was a mistake, cause everything I see here happened with, with our previous town administrator, forgot to submit it.
So it's actually the responsibility of the town clerk's office?
Okay.
Um, any articles to the town?
Then it was a town clerk that forgot to submit it, so that's the reason, Britton, why I say it was a mistake, cause I see it voted here as positive. With the yays and nays for that, um, article in the ninety-two. Town meeting, it just looks like the follow-through didn't happen. So that's the reason why I, I say the mistake was done at an administrative level, not at a, a, a planning board and or even a town meeting.
Mistake may not have been at our end either.
Correct.
Could have been at the attorney general's office.
That, it could have got submitted, and, and you're right, I, I, I'm doing presumptions, Norm. That they never did the documentation and sent it back, or it got sent back and lost, that could have happened too. So that could have happened too. I just think at this point. It should be an administrative call, not a planning board call, that's my opinion.
Can we amend the petition? To?
We can't touch a citizen's petition.
No, no, but, uh.
We're talking about the?
The. God.
Motion?
Motion's on the floor right now.
Yes, yep, you have a motion and a second.
Yeah, can, but we can amend it.
Yep, Tim can amend and Britton can second the amendment.
How about. Amending it to also request at town meeting that the administration. Give a history of the zoning of that property.
I like that. I'm okay with that.
Um, if I, if I may, so the only hiccup to that is, is I believe that legally, the town is not able to speak. To a citizen's petition. We cannot provide information, it's up to the petitioner to speak on the floor. To everything, so we can't provide supporting documentation.
This is because of what had happened, not because of what he's doing.
I understand what you're saying, but because it's a citizen's petition.
It's the history and why it's being done.
They can't take an opinion, Dick, that's the problem. See, that's why, that's why the FICOM takes a, uh.
We can't provide supporting documentation, we can't give anything in the public meeting packet, it's wholly on this, this submitter.
So you can't have anybody stand up and says?
They can as a private citizen, but not as a representative of a town, yeah.
Yeah.
But I wanna give him a black eye, because.
No.
Well, it's, to me, for trying a lot of it, it was, you know, it's, it's just coming up now, but it. Pardon?
It wasn't Anita, predated Anita.
Oh, no, it couldn't have, cause she's.
Validating probably.
No, she validated.
Oh, she validated this. Oh, I apologize then, I, I, and I apologize, I saw her stamp on here.
She's gonna watch this, and she's gonna be mad at you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Anita, I made a mistake.
Anita was very, very helpful in this whole process in trying to locate all these documents.
Yes.
A lot of hours into this.
Then, I, I apologize, I just saw her stamp, I'm like, I should have thought that Sally was the, that's, that's a mistake on mine from mental foobar. I just, I don't.
And in the nineties, I, I.
Yeah.
I think back then, the town clerk was also the treasure collector.
Yes, yeah, yeah, did both, yeah, you're right. I just gotta stick with what, cause I don't have a.
And again, it's a residential piece in between two industrial pieces.
It was residential?
Technically, it's residential, but it's used as industrial.
I know, yeah.
Decades is industrial, and it's between two industrial pieces.
Well, when I read it, I kind of thought it was part of it.
We're just trying to clean up the document, so if, if there's a land sale, it, you know, that this is correct.
Dang, 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 dang.
Two-thirds is a tough vote to get at town meeting, that's why I'm.
Yeah.
Thank you for your support.
You have it, but. I still would like to have somebody to, to say, how about having the town council stand up and says, the reason why. This is going through is because. Such and such stuff was lost.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I, I put that language right in the petition. So the, if you read the actual petition language. It's very clear that this is a, this is a correction. It's the first page. I thought it was the first page.
Illegal ad?
No, it's in the, the page with the signatures on it, it's on the top.
It's the last page of this stapled ones with the, uh. Yeah, the vote will reaffirm a previous town vote. The zoning change was originally voted and passed at town meeting eighteen, February eighteen ninety-two. The zoning change was never submitted, attorney general's off review, and approval is required by Mass General Law.
Hey, I had both Anita and John review and edit that language. So they, they've both, uh, provided their comments, and I made some adjustments based on their comments.
I'm sorry, I gotta stick with my guns.
Damn it. It just seems, it just seems to me that, the thing is, this, this article will, will have to be read verbatim.
Yeah.
That should. Give a pretty good. About a pretty, a pretty good, you know, affirmation that, yeah, it, it should be zoned.
Yeah.
But, by the way, I do. It says Light Industrial District Office, it should be Light Industrial slash Office District.
Yeah. It's out there.
Negate anything.
That might be correct, cause I remember it being really goofy in the, in the book.
A hundred percent sure. You know, it's, I can't picture that being a fatal mistake. Actually, the way it is listed in the table of contents.
Is the way it's written.
Is the way it's written there.
Interesting. Yeah, I remember it being very goofy when I.
Yet, under area regulations, when they're talking about the Light Industrial, it's Light Industrial Office Districts.
So it's a, it's a verbal check.
Good thing we insisted. I think it said they renamed it to at some point, they renamed Light Industrial in the bylaws. That's probably why it's got two different. I mean, I'm supportive of it, you know, I think the board is just wondering down the, the. What's coming next, you know, is everyone just gonna buy our in here and, and bring stuff in.
Well, I, I do, I do think, I like your idea about the policy, I think that's something that.
And I think that should be in almost any meeting.
So you're saying the ad hoc committee is gonna meet and do this?
No, it's, it's, this would be a policy that John would have to put together.
But just, just to play devil's advocate, wouldn't you want to weigh in in case it's a zoning change that you disagree with? I mean, to me, to me, I would think you would want to weigh in, especially if it's some ridiculous spot zoning.
I'm sure we would, yes.
I'm talking about consistency.
Policy that you wouldn't.
I'm just talking about consistency.
I see what you mean. Consistency is great, but we have to have, this is why we're here. We have the ability to make a decision. So if we don't, if we don't like it, we say, yeah, no. If we're like, hey, you had a citizen's petition, or, uh. We don't think it's that bad, but you didn't follow what, you know, you, you, you took your own rights. As a citizen's petition, great, fantastic, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna approve it, we're gonna deny it, we're gonna say, hey, no action. That's fair. That's fair, cause you didn't come to us, you didn't ask, we didn't review it, you just said, hey, I got ten signatures, hey. No. Here it is, I want you to approve it.
Last zoning change, I actually went to John.
I'm just saying, here it is. Here it is, approved.
I was at three meetings.
But, once it's, once that's done, once that's done, like, I, I, we're not held to a certain standard where. Oh, we approved this one, now there's forty in front of us, and all these forty lots have to get approved because we did this one. I'm not, I'm not for that.
Certain precedent.
It's not even precedent, it's our ability to make a decision as a board on each individual case that's brought before us. We're granted that by state law. There, there's no like, oh, well, you voted on this one, guys. You're, we're gonna put you on the, on the, on the rails for this one, cause you said no. We don't owe them that, I, I apologize, but we don't owe them that.
I'm in no way saying that you owe me that. I'm asking for support because it makes sense here. And a two-thirds vote is tough to get on a town meeting floor. That's why I'm here.
So you're asking us to support something again?
That makes sense for the town and corrects a mistake.
That makes sense for the lot owner. I'm not sure that it makes sense for the town.
I am.
A residential piece in between two industrial pieces does not seem to make sense to the town.
So it's now industrial zoning because, hey, you guys missed this one. Then there's, there's, there's a couple of applications on our desk, gentlemen, that we could easily say, well, we should, we should absolutely approve those. Because we're gonna approve this one. Spot zoning is a real problem. And it gets overturned at state a lot of times.
And that's why I wanna see this thing done, would make. A larger area zoned, like industrial.
Instead of a residential house.
Instead of.
Between two industrial future uses.
Correct.
Not arguing on the viability, arguing on the process.
You know, and, uh, I guess if, if it wasn't Mark, but it was the same piece of land. You know, would we say something different, or would we be in the same spot about, well, the last meeting we had, we did it with a different person, you know? I'm not saying it's, cause Mark's shown up twice, but, um. You know, it, even if Mark did show up twice, does it matter? Does it force, in, in what Britton's mentioning, um. Doesn't cut us off from the third person that comes in from being, um, of a different opinion, I guess, you know?
So it kind of comes down to. Consistency versus our right to say whatever we feel. In a particular case. Which would we rather? We can't have both.
Something with, yeah. Obviously, if we vote, it's a up or down, you know, it's still that. You know, a decision may come out of whatever five people choose. So I guess there's some leeway with what, what you do individually, maybe. If we hone, hone in as a group, yeah, you could all vote yay. So I guess there's some leeway with what, what you do individually, maybe if we hone, hone in as a group, yeah, you could all vote yay or nay. Something'll come out of whether five, five, four, two, three, two, one, or whatever comes out.
I like to think that if we have an opportunity in the very near future, sit down and do a policy or do something like that, fine, from then on.
Like I say, you know, do we want a policy? That's the other side of it.
And, um, what kind of policy, I know Mark mentioned, thinking it's just, we don't say anything.
For example, a policy that we do not make recommendations on citizens petitions.
Yeah.
Do we want that?
I mean, I don't wanna speak for the FICOM, but that's what I thought theirs was, and I, and I could be wrong, I'm not sure, I don't know for a fact.
Yeah, I believe that they normally, they have to make something.
Yeah, they gotta make a.
Right, so they usually choose.
No action?
No action.
Yeah, that's what, I, I, I don't, I just remember that from all the town meetings I've been to on any citizen's petition, they just went with no action. That was theirs, because they have to, they're required to make a recommendation on all warrant articles.
I would not wanna make a recommendation of no action.
No, you don't. Just speaking of a policy.
It doesn't even come.
Even if it is no action, wouldn't you want the planning board to have the opportunity to weigh in on a zoning change, good, bad, or indifferent? I, I would think a policy wouldn't make much sense.
That's, yeah, that's where I'm, going back and forth, back and forth.
Well, I mean, it doesn't mean you don't have to come before the board and just talk about it as a public thing, you know, it's still, you know, it's more of just getting it out in the room, you know, and for people, possibly people to hear if they're watching.
Yeah, it means you hit us with a public petition with very little discussion beforehand. And you're asking us to endorse it.
What bothers me is that.
Not gonna do that.
Can't bring up a zoning map and doesn't show it as being split. What does the map show?
I don't think we can do anything once the hearing's closed.
Great. I think, I might be able to point you to the packet.
Oh, I don't think I saw a zoning map in here.
It may not be in here.
Oh, there was a little, there was a little map, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere, here it is.
Yeah.
The assessor's map, but that's all.
That's only highlighted in that one part.
Yeah, it doesn't give anything else.
Because. How long ago did we have, I can't remember his name, Rich, wasn't it? Not Rich Raiden, um, Central Mass Regional, he used to work for him, and then he and his partner, they did the zoning map for the planning board.
Oh, yeah.
They did a lot of study on that.
I think it was, I found that in looking through all these documents, I think it was like right around nineteen, two thousand and ten.
Yeah, Scannellin did that for you, did it in AutoCAD and PDF and Color and.
I'd like to know, did it show, uh, or is it, did it show all?
Give me a second and I.
It showed the small piece that the heel company is on, it did not show the vacant land.
It did not.
And that's what drew us to start digging up all these documents.
Okay.
That's what started the whole thing.
Alright.
It's always been assessed as industrial, and it always was thought to be industrial, but that map didn't have it.
Yeah.
So I started with Anita and went back through all the map documentation. And that's what kinda led us back to the nineties, we found everything, thought we were all set, but then we couldn't find the AG stuff.
Shoot.
And, and I think maybe the map might have come from the AG documentation. So that's, you know, probably, probably why it was correctly not listed as industrial.
Shame on me for not noticing that.
Inervail, right here, it's got a residential piece in between, right in the middle. Yep, and if I'm doing my.
Talk about spot residential, instead of spot zoning of business or whatever.
Well, and it's an industrial use to, you know.
Yeah.
To make matters, to take it another step, it's not like it's vacant land, it's, it's being used.
Excuse me.
Well.
Side, side plot theory, I guess, um, you know, I've done a citizen's petition before. I did like three, four hundred, four hundred signature petition, brought it to the ZBA regarding cell tower put next to a kid's school in town. They kinda understood the weight of it, but it would, they kinda brushed it off, it was one of those things, not that it adds really a situation, but I know kinda what it's like doing it and then kinda getting nothing from it too, so. Know what you, know it can be kinda, you know, you're doing as best you can to get some, some people to know about it, and by using the petition to kinda generate, um, the interest to get, get a change to happen, you know, we're trying to prove that there's something out there that can be done, and, you know, this is what we like to do, and obviously, it's positive for the town in the end, you know, I, in an example, I guess, they, they did nothing. They were just like, we're, we're putting it up, you know, and it was just like, okay, you guys are crazy. It's kinda just one of those things, or not, in a way, as a, a citizen, it seemed, seemed like, uh, you know, it's tough, but, um, yep, so I know what you're going through, you know, it's like, um.
So we have a motion on the floor to make no recommendation, I believe.
I'm, I'm ready, but not, not that way.
Did you wanna rewrite the motion or reword the motion too? There was no, I'm sticking.
Can't vote on that and then move.
I think, yeah, they're probably gonna need to. Are we ready to vote for everybody? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, well, go right around the table, Britain. This is to make no recommendation.
Yes.
Dick?
No. Um, Keith, um, abstain? Get forward in the mix?
That's gonna take.
Four, two, one.
You're gonna put the deciding on it.
Oh, oh.
I've gotta say yes.
I'm, I'm gonna say yes.
I don't want to, but I've got. And with that, I believe the motion carries by four one.
Three, zero, one.
Three, zero, one. No, three, one, one.
Oh, yeah, that's true, I'm sorry. Yes, it's three, one, one.
Yeah. No, abstain.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was wrong.
Russell, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, take care, good to see you.
You too.
Take care.
Not like that at all.
Yeah, and, uh, it's gonna even get worse at the end of this meeting, so.
It could, it could.
Yeah. What's that?
That doesn't sound good.
Okay. Next on the agenda, discussion of, uh, proposed Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, I saw this one. I just.
Alright, thank you.
I think that'll, I think.
It's gonna carry in this, it, it.
I think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, I do too, I just, I, yeah, I'll say it, I will say.
Now I gotta go to the town meeting, thanks a lot, guys.
Have to come to the town meeting with your, uh, Bruce Willis sign vote for Richard Charles.
Oh, God, please.
I saw, if I look at the long standing application for two fifty-five, is that, is that the Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, I was.
Um, boy, I tell ya.
Because they came to us, how long ago, it can't be twenty twenty-two, this was years ago that they came to us and walked away. I mean, they did the presentation.
Yeah.
And then they found out that they didn't, they couldn't get the place because it was in tax.
Taxation.
Yeah, and then everything stopped, but that's been, not twenty twenty-two. Yes.
Yeah.
So if I, I just may add that the zoning bylaw requires, um, that the planning board provide a comment, if you're comfortable, to the zoning board of appeals for any public hearings.
Oh, okay.
So that's why, and the only reason it's going to the ZBA and not the planning board is because they were the original issuer or grantor of the site plan.
Permit, yeah.
Yeah, our special.
Do you know if Anita ever found that, she sent me emails and I sent her to Dave McCray, she couldn't find the original ZBA.
They found it, they found it in the ZBA files.
Oh, they did?
It was, it was.
Because she thought, she said, Tim, did you borrow that? I said, no, I, I told Dave McCray that he needs to go look it up, so check with him.
When he found it upstairs on the third floor in our treasure trove, so, yep, got it.
Yeah, because I initially started, because my question was when they were putting the siding up, I go, I don't mean to be a pain in the butt, but that's vinyl siding, not clapboard.
Yep.
And then, uh, um, Gary told me to, uh, we'll take care of that with the building inspector, I said, okay. I just wanted to bring it up.
Which they never did.
Never did.
Never did.
But honestly, when you look at the siding, you can't really tell the difference between the clapboard, but in the spirit of the, uh, uh, of the original special permit, it doesn't follow it, but it's still, you know, it looks good.
Um, and just to add, they also have a notice of intent before the conservation commission, they had their first public hearing last Tuesday. And I also sent the stormwater report and the entire application to Kevin Quinn, and he's doing a third party review for both the ZBA and the conservation commission.
I gotta look at the site plan, that's what, that's what I didn't get a chance to do.
We mainly just commenting, so.
Yeah.
This is if you wanna provide any comment for the ZBA's consideration at the public hearing.
Lengthy or like a recommendation?
It can be whatever you want, sometime, a lot of times, the board says they have no comment, because most of the time, it's like a variance or something.
Yeah.
Um, so it's really up to the board how lengthy or how little you wanna share.
Yeah.
Yeah.
First item that never happened, I want a traffic study done. And was never done.
I'm not against that, I, I would agree. That intersection, I apologize, I, I don't mean to jump on the back.
No, go ahead, no.
That thing is a disaster, people have no idea how right of ways work. Everybody that comes out of that institution is, is subject to the rest of the intersection, and nobody knows that. They think they are part of the intersection.
Correct.
And that is, somebody's gonna get hurt.
Very dangerous.
Oh, they've had. And kids are gonna get hurt, that, there's so many crosswalks right, I'm sorry, I don't mean to get wound up.
No.
But, but this is, this is something that's very near and dear to my heart, because I see kids walk there, and I see people whip out a Dunkin's, don't understand how frickin' traffic works.
Well, did, did you?
You're gonna turn me into you, aren't you?
Yes.
I'm gonna be that guy.
Thank you, thank you. Did you ever read the conditions for Dunkin' Donuts?
Police, I actually, I have.
Baby down. The police were supposed to be there for, for, uh, uh, the kids coming across, they're supposed to hire somebody to do it.
Now we have guards, crossing guards. Well, it's, it's worse than that, Dick, if, if, because you know, on Saturdays and Sundays, when the cars line up in the, in the right of way, trying to get in there, legitimately, the chief could walk into Dunkin' Donuts and say, you're closed, I'm shutting you down right now.
And when I went to Mass Dot and brought it up down there on that.
They could do it too, because it's their road.
He says, it's up to their policeman.
Oh, it is?
Police chief to go in there and shut it down, because they're, uh, not following rules, the traffic rules and regulations, period.
So in this, and maybe you guys can help me out, so, this, in this new design that's gonna use the property right next to it, is, I, see, the, the problem I have with this is, Tim is an engineer, looks for arrows to tell him which way traffic goes, and I can't see that in here.
They, they do have those.
Did, am I missing it?
They do have a traffic flow diagram, it's on, uh.
C two.
Yes, sir.
I, I'm on C four, did I miss it? Because C two was, I thought, the old design. C one.
It's like Nate, the way the engineer described it at.
Page three.
Conservation.
Page three, Tim.
Was that where the old building used to be, they're going to create a one-way entrance so that the cars can line up around the building versus on Main Street, and then cars will still exit from where they do right now.
So here's.
The exits was my biggest problem.
How do you block the entrance with a line, getting into the line?
So you gentlemen have these prints in front of you, look at this.
Yeah.
This is ridiculous, they, they take all of the traffic that's there, we've all seen it.
Yeah.
And then they curl it around a parking lot, which means, oh, yeah, yeah, you can absolutely block all these cars in, there's gonna be no problems here. And then, you're gonna take him, turn him back into the drive-thru.
As a loop-de-loop.
From a one-in, one-out.
Yeah, with no setback.
Not a big fan. I'd like to. Somebody's gonna get hurt here.
Yeah.
And it's just a matter of time.
It's a good attempt, I, you know, it seems like it's possible, it would be nice if we could tell them.
Well, they're also expanding the back driveway, I noticed too, that's getting expanded too.
By ten feet.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. Did anybody look back at the old deeds on this place, the houses that were there before?
They were all historical, they.
Did, did they not have a right of way to get in the back, going down Fairview to come into the back?
Oh, you mean, next to where the, uh, and come around?
And come, and just to come in, Ron Pepperuski had the right to come in off of Fairview into the back of his property. And even before, when his mother owned it and all that, I would say, is there anything on the deeds that says that they have a right of way to do that?
I mean.
Because by the looks of the way the.
To Britain's point, if they came in Fairview and did a loop in the back, that would save all kinds of hate and discontent of cars running each, in, into each other, coming in right now and doing basically, uh, uh, a, a zero and a zero, that you, you're gonna have, you're gonna have issues with traffic that's coming into park, that's coming head-on. And it's just, it's just, I, I see what the engineer's trying to do, I get it, he's got limited, limited design features, but I'm just not a, now that I see where the arrows are going and how they're doing this, oh my.
Who's it, who's it, two sixty-one Main, is that, is that still a?
Ron Pepperuski.
Ron Pepperuski.
That's still an active house, correct?
Yes.
And two sixty-three?
Uh-oh. Is that, I mean, they're, they're, they're okay with this, I, I don't see any better.
Yeah, because he used to, he used to come in here, because he had a, a garage and down below down here, plus up above, he had.
I mean, it's one thing to have a driveway a block away, it's another to have it like now, it's coming right down your kitchen window.
Yeah.
Did you see that, um, two, two sets of the butter notifications went out for, between CommCom and ZBA, we did not have anybody that attended the.
No, no, that's fine, I assumed that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
I assume you guys checked the box, I was just like, wow, really? Okay.
Well, then before, they had a house right up against it, and I think it just said, somewhere in the, this paperwork, it's all legal stuff, that they put up a fence wall.
Yeah.
You know, just to keep the lights from going right into the house, you know?
Yeah, headlights.
Which would be probably, you know, what's gonna happen there as well.
Yeah.
Um, my side comments were, you know, you can't do a two-lane checkout here, like, who didn't, who didn't bring that up? Like, uh, that's the most common high-flow checkout, you see it at the McDonald's in Holden. You couldn't even get the line to go any shorter at Chick-fil-A and Whister, it's one of the busiest places I've ever seen. Um, but they use two lanes to check, well, they do converge before they get to the, you know, I'm just surprised they didn't, no one's, obviously, you can only make one set of plans at some point, and someone's gotta decide.
They're, they're trying to reuse the building, and they've only got one, one check window, and that's it, that's the problem right now.
But you make a, like, on this turn to drive in, there could be.
Oh, you mean like Holden's Dunkin' Donuts has, you've got the, when you come in, you, the problem is, they're afraid they're gonna get too much traffic backed up there. Because i- in Holden, you've got that, at the Dunkin' Donuts over by the, the banks, you've got that loop-de-loop to come in, where you can park cars. park cars behind the parking lot before they come in, this, there's just no space.
Leaving with the two checkouts system, at least you can get one person ordered, next person ordered, you know, like, where's the study that says we can get rid of more cars out of our building, and obviously maybe there's someone who knows that data, but that would be.
To make it, did, did, when the engineer presented, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of tou- having a tough time that they wouldn't come, that we wouldn't get some type. It says building extension, what is the intent of that? And he, did he mention anything? I apologize, I'm putting you on the spot.
He mentioned doing outdoor coolers, um, they al- they also talked about extending it, but it was to extend for handicap parking and um, the loading docks and the dumpster.
Oh, that's what the ramps are there for, yeah.
Yeah, cause then the dumpster is very, very hard to access right now, um.
Here's something I wanna throw out to the board for the ZBA, the, the, the tough part about this position is when they bring in the Dunkin' Donuts truck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a huge, and I get they've extended it ten feet back, I, I see that, but I just, ah, I, I don't wanna deny them, cause they've got a business there, but there's gotta be a better design, and I'm not smart enough to figure out what that is, but, um.
Yeah, move it down onto Maple Ave.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's why I wanna, you know, would like a traffic study, because let Mass Dot come in and, and talk about it, they are right now supposedly in Rutland doing one twenty-two A, looking for projects and things like that, so, to me, if all of a sudden they're gonna put a roundabout in it, and, and I'm gonna say about uh,
Did, Tamika?
You, you can see half of their doggone, where the driveway comes in there, like about ten feet of it, is their property.
But what are they doing with this dog leg out back? I mean, there's a dog leg at the end of the property that goes all the way back here.
There's something they own.
I just noticed it on here, any idea what, what their intent?
Wetlands in the back, so.
Sure, so they're, in the back, they're gonna be removing those stairs that are back there, and they're just going to be creating a slope, I think they said it was a two and a half to one slope, and then they're gonna use.
They're gonna put a swill RIS, uh.
A, they're gonna put a special seed mix down that doesn't require mowing, because it's such a steep.
That would be Bermuda grass, but that's a.
Yeah, it was like a combination of all kinds of stuff that they were putting down back there.
I just.
That's why I'd like to know if there was a right-of-way back in the deeds and it was never transferred forward.
I mean, how do we, I guess from the board's perspective, how do we comment that if we don't like it, do we just say?
We'll issue a letter.
Of, this needs more study and a potential rework?
We issue our comments in a letter through John.
Yeah, I just, I'm.
To make it, cause John is.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, either way, it's, it's an email with bullet points, however you wanna do it, it doesn't have to be super formal, but if you have concerns in the site plan, which I do.
And you're the secretary.
Yeah, I write and send it to myself.
Yeah.
And, I guess, I'm trying to figure out, didn't.
My other comments were, you know, it, and it would be impossible with a double ring, but at, say McDonald's, you order something, they don't have it right away, they ask you to pull up designated parking for people who are.
Oh, they do that at Dunkin's, but you just get to pull up next to the trash can.
But so, I don't shop there enough to know, but yeah, so they are, so I mean, you know, you can, you can keep a line moving by getting someone who's got an order that is holding up the line, you know, and, and, and maybe that's gonna happen, but I don't see any markings for.
Well, there's barely, Keith, there's barely a car length past the uh, past the pickup, the pickup thing, and what, again.
Right, yeah, where are you gonna go?
I uh, I occasionally, I'm that guy that gets the special sandwich, which they can't make, so, could you move up, and so I move up to the trash can, empty the car's trash, cause I'm a traveling dude, keeps stuff in there, which is a good time to do it, but then they come out the front door and then bring you the food, then you gotta, then you gotta fight the traffic that's coming in front of you and backing out, so it's, it's not a good situation, but that's all they've got right now, and I don't see it changing with this configuration.
You know what they should do is put everything in reverse.
And move the, move it over to the other side?
So you leave on the other side, you load two lanes, you can, I don't know, there's more room on the side.
I actually like that idea, because it's easier to get in there, cause you're forced through the turn signal, and when you're coming out, and again, I, I, I can't blame drivers for not doing what they're legally supposed to do, but a lot of times, they'll be exiting there, and you don't know if they're going left, right, or straight. You have no idea.
They have no idea.
Well, I'm getting that, but me on the other side, who's being the defensive driver, I don't know what I should do, cause I really don't like the insurance in Massachusetts, and I don't wanna be part of that system, so, um, again, I think one of our bullets points should be, um, relook at the engineering in-and-out plan, to Dick's point, a traffic study, and um.
One hundred percent.
And, and I, that's sort of, to me, sums it up, because looking at the re-engineering plans and coming back to us with another solution.
Yeah.
Or coming back for recommendations to the planning board is what I, cause ZBA gets to make the call on this.
And I'm sure that the town of Rutland would be more than happy if Dunkin' Donuts would take over Fairview Ave and, or.
Dick, that could be another.
Bring it up to speed and, and make it a town road, not a private.
That could be another bullet point, please uh, review uh, uh, rightaways with Fairview Ave for access to Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah.
I mean, you're giving them options, look at the, the in-and-out plans, look at Fairview, and uh, um.
Yeah, share what I have, and you guys can tell me if it covers everything, um, Dick mentioned the traffic study, um, I think everybody's consensus with it, you do not feel the proposed plan is an improvement from what it is now. Um, Keith noted that there wasn't a consideration for using two lanes for the drive-through, um, Tim is concerned with the loading area for the dump structure trailer truck, no spots for people waiting for their order to be filled, um, concerned with still exiting across from Palmagussa, and would like to see it possibly the other way, and considering uh, any right-of-way options with Fair, Fairview Ave.
Somebody smarter than me, where does this retaining wall, um, it's on the back, the proposed retaining wall, there's no detail for it. And it's over eight feet, so it's gotta be an engineered retaining wall.
It's four and a half feet.
Oh, it is, it's saying twenty.
Anything over forty-eight inches though is subject to structural review.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm just looking at the, in the back, they've got the large block retaining wall section, and they say each block is, is twenty-eight inch, and I'm doing the math, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven times twenty-eight inches is way more than eight feet.
Well, in the subsurface stormwater infiltration pond, like that's gotta get, that's gotta get an EPA, like that's, that's gotta be reviewed.
Yeah, I see where they're sending it out to the back and trying to distribute it.
Which is okay if it needs all the checkpoints for.
Yeah.
You know, oil-water separation, I mean, you're, you're, you're increasing a substantial amount of parking spots, in my opinion. You, which still are, you're under the requirement of between twenty and, twenty-two and twenty-five spots requires one handicap. Um, so they all, they still have one handicap spot. That's still a requirement, um, I don't, I don't agree with it, I think they should have one more, but that's, that's a personal opinion, I can't hang my hat on it.
Can't force them not to follow.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's, that's per their, their requirement.
But, but Britain, there's no reason we couldn't put that in our, our request.
If it's a special permit, yes, we can.
And that's what this is, if I'm not mistaken, is this a special permit?
I think it's site plan.
It's a site plan review, I think this is, I gotta talk to John, or chairman's gotta talk to John and understand our.
Cause the, the previous one, Dick, tell me if I'm wrong, it was a special permit from ZBA, so I don't see how they could get out of not doing another special permit.
Um, so I'm just noticing on the agenda that John indicates he included a memo on this.
Oh, he did?
In the packet, so I don't know if he provided anything.
Uh, let me see if he's getting.
A memo from John Sharpano regarding plan modifications for Dunkin' Donuts.
Uh, Tim.
I don't see that.
I don't know it.
There's a memo to board from John, but it's just saying the public hearing, it's just giving us information.
Oh, okay, I see.
Says the members intend to make the climate aware, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing, on, on May eighth. The proposed, there's another one, let me see if I can. Oh, here's one, here's a memorandum from, to the building department from the planning office, that's the twenty-second.
Oh, that was one from twenty twenty-two, I'm sorry, I thought it was from John, okay.
Totally discombobulated with all my papers here at this point.
Oh, here we go, it's uh.
It does.
Page twenty-six of fifty-two. Application for modification, for modification of site plan approval. So I, I've read through this, it's very high level, um, basically saying, yeah, we're, we're conforming with the DEP stormwater standards, the town of Rutland, et cetera.
Twenty twenty-two though, the whole thing references it as a site plan, and a site plan review, it doesn't say anything about a special permit.
What about the original one, was that, did they copy that and put it in here?
It does say a site plan review denial decision from the zoning board of appeals dated March fourth nineteen ninety-eight. And then it went to land court.
Yeah, and then ninety-nine, they.
It was a remand ZBA site plan review decision to modify the previously approved one, so it all says site plan.
Yeah, but how did they get all of those things in, Dick, where the building has to be to that?
It sealed the denial.
But they just didn't, the agreement might not have liked.
That can't be a site plan, there's no way, nor in the thing, all of the requirements for the building.
The plan is that way.
Yep.
They couldn't come to an agreement, I guess. They couldn't put that in a site plan review, could they? That'd have to be in some type of.
As it is now, and then it went to the land court and they approved it.
Yeah.
Special, you know, like with the traffic, that the chief could shut down the uh.
Oh, so.
Yeah, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could they put that in a site point? Oh, they did.
Yeah.
Here it is, uh, demolition, same height as existing, so they put it in this uh, findings and decision of site plan review, so they put it in their findings, which that's odd, you put all these conditions in a site plan review. That'd be more to me like a special permit, but.
And there's an application for modification of a previous zoning board of appeals approval. For site plan approval.
Yeah. Cause didn't that used to, and you guys would know, didn't that used to be the old telephone building?
Way back when, that's.
I'm glad I.
One of the reasons why they asked for that type of siding and keep the front of it the way it is.
Yeah, and that's the one thing I've learned at town, that that used to be the old.
This is a, just in my personal opinion of site review, this is a, this is a pretty substantial construction project. The amount of fill that's going in here is thousands of yards.
Yeah.
Um, this is not like a, hey, we just, we have a flat site, we wanna do ten more parking spots on the back, and then.
This is commercial construction?
Right, and then i- it's controlled construction, which gives us protection.
Yeah.
But, this isn't, like if you, I'll just, this is existing.
Yeah.
These are existing grades, which drops off like.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you're a hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred feet out, now you have a structural retaining wall, and a considerable, again, this has all been engineered, so this isn't, you know, nobody's doing this ad hoc, but that's a substantial project, that is not like, hey, we want some more parking spots, hey, we want, you know, we wanna do a couple more, we just wanna expand the driveway, this is not what we're being presented with, just in, in one man's opinion.
That's the edge of the wetlands too, right?
Yeah, and there's, yeah, there's, 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 they're gonna be right here.
And then they cross over in front of traffic.
They're, they're within.
That's just, that's a disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah, the closest point is six feet to the wetlands, the discharge.
That's, 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 that, that, that's not our purview.
Yeah, well, that was what they were gonna ask, did they give?
We can make a recommendation to con- to confer with the conservation commission, I would be, if I was on that board, I'd have a huge problem with that, but that's just one man.
The hearing was continued.
It was.
And we have not been issued a DEP number yet, so we don't have comments from DEP, we also wanted to wait to hear back from Kevin Quinn on the stormwater, stormwater report. Um, so the next hearing is actually May seventh, which is the day before the zoning board hearing.
So that's.
And, but that's not enough time for us to get a meeting in.
Yeah, but that's their business.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, but I, I like Britain, I mean, this should be a, this should be a town boards discussion, not individuals, that's sort of what I'm getting at, I mean, we don't have control over the ConCon, but between the two of us.
Nor they us.
Yeah, but the two of us could actually.
Joint meeting.
Joint meeting with, with, because this, to me, this is a, again, and, and maybe I'm using the wrong words, this is a major commercial um, addition in the center of town, and, and in my, it's again, my opinion, it's taking a bad, a bad design and not making it any better, that's what I can see from these drawings.
The looparound's the, the killer too, I think.
Yeah.
Something stronger than.
Thing is, the bottom line is, it's our job to make a recommendation to ZBA.
I, I think we've done it with what we've got for bullets.
I'll put a memo together with everything you guys mentioned tonight.
And also, I mean, I, I don't like broad brush stuff, but like, I have a significant issue in giving any recommendation whatsoever until I, I have the engineer who designed this come in and talk to me.
Do a presentation.
Tell me exactly what the heck is drawn here, cause I see it, I know what he's doing, but I wanna talk through that. And I think, I think every, every citizen that would look at this, you know, ipso facto or, or down the road, would say, hey, did you guys ask the engineer any questions? Who did the traffic study?
Hmm.
Who did the, the, the traffic flow? Who signed off on this massive retaining wall? Again, controlled construction, controlled construction, we know the answer, but still.
Is, is the ZBA gonna put in there also, you know, something about the kids trying to get to school, you know?
Well, we have also um sought the feedback of Chief Monaco.
Yeah.
As well, um, although obvious, it's not required in the bylaw, it's obviously warranted in this case, so we have um, asked for him to provide feedback for the hearing as well.
Interesting.
If there are specific questions that you would like to see the ZBA ask, I'm happy to include that in the memo, cause the intention isn't for you to necessarily make a recommendation so much as it is to provide feedback that they can consider, that maybe they wouldn't have thought of, you know?
In the back of my mind, I'm thinking, should the kids have a push button to stop the traffic for them to go to the sidewalk?
With flashers on the property, not just.
I just think for crossing the street. With these drawings, the big picture is what's not being covered here, and, and the little stuff eventually get into the details, but there's too many big picture things that I got, I got questions on, and, and, and to Britain's point, without somebody, me being the Missouri engineer, show me, and let me ask questions, I, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, like I was just saying to Norm, now that I, and on C two, they pointed out Britain for the arrows.
Yeah.
I, I gotta tell you.
That's not gonna work.
That, that, to me, that's, that's a recipe for the chief filling out a lot of traffic, well, no, he doesn't, because it's private property, that's just gonna be a mess.
But it's still gonna need to be managed.
Yeah.
And it's gonna fall on us, the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I think what Tamika's got for a lot of bullet points to send the ZBA, we'll give them a little pause to think.
Well, yeah, and, and let's put it this way, you know, we, we can talk all we want to about it.
We don't have authority over.
We don't have the authority.
Yeah, but we can give enough information, they've got smart people in the ZBA.
We, we hope that they will do their job as they're supposed to, okay? Well, that's why I, I wanted Mass Dot out of this thing, because with the police chief, should be involved with Mass Dot on it for a traffic study or what's to come in the future.
Oh, Mr. Williams, look at these light poles for lighting out there in the front of the building.
Knock it off.
Go to, go to C six point one.
Don't tell him that.
I thought I'd get him wound up, look at that P one, P one and P one.
Tim's just, he's just got the cauldron, and he's just going right now.
I'm turning the Williams.
Look at, look at that, are you kidding me? It's gonna light up the sky like you wouldn't believe.
Yeah, I had a question about that.
They need to make money, Dick, how are they gonna make money?
What are you gonna drag the people from Boston?
If it's fucking not lit up.
I can see people in Boston saying, oh, look at that out there, let's go find out where that is.
No, it, it just goes to, again, and I'm not trying to zone, but this is, to me, not a complete, well-designed. I mean, it's, to me, this would be a first pass for a talk, to Britain's point, if the engineer came in and presented, this is what I thought, let me get your feedback and go back and i- i- in my world, this is like a fifty percent design, go back and go back and uh, take, this is like issued for review. Now go back and give me an issue for engineer design, and then do final comments. Now go back and give me an issue for engineer design and then do final comments, then get an issue for construction design out. And I and I don't see this as, if they're gonna, if they think the Z B A is looking for an issue for approval for this, man. In my opinion, again, I'm not the Z B A, it's Norm's point, we don't make the call.
Nor the ConCon.
Nor the ConCon, I would not.
The tent settling basin alone has a lack of detail that is atrocious.
They allowed to displace wetland as long as they rebuild it somewhere on the property?
That's a ConCons.
I know, but.
Yes.
Usually they do.
Could they push the land, it's like five thousand?
If you disturb within the buffer zone, the hundred foot buffer zone, you have to replicate at a two to one ratio.
You wonder if.
I would have to look at, you could actually pull it up, the the N O A is posted on the website, it will tell you if they're proposing any alteration, but I don't believe that they are.
So I mean, they could make a bigger parking lot if they can legally make more.
But again, we're asking good questions that an engineer could answer in front of us.
Right.
We won't forget too, I'm sure we're gonna get a great deal of information back from Kevin Quinn.
Oh, there's my good buddy.
Yeah, yeah, he has everything.
Kevin's gonna probably say, I already thought of that, guys, you guys just spent an hour talking about everything I've already said.
Yes and no.
Oh, I know, I'm just being facetious.
I will, I will tell you, for me, like, the the biggest red flag here is the in incredible increase of this parking lot. And it's traffic flow, just within the site, I'm not even talking about what's gonna happen on Main Street. Like, just within the site alone, I have significant concerns.
Stop sign holding back traffic coming up fifty-six. That's it.
And I mean, I, you know, not to get crazy here, but they. There's a lot of school age kids that walk this thing, and we're just, we're getting, we're just getting silly now. In my, my personal opinion, but again, that's one man's thought. And we were also doubling the parking spaces, which I understand why, it's a business at the end of the day. It sucks to park there, even on a Saturday morning after soccer, I can't find a parking spot with my kids and they want a donut. But to still have one, again, it's within the requirements, but to have one handicap space. I don't know, that, don't tell me why, it irks me. I think you, I think you should have more than that, but again, they're not required to. Unless it's a special permit.
Now, if the town could come across and have that brand new road from Naquag all the way to. The heights and then have part of that fairview, I can't remember what it is called, though, that road, there is a town road. All traffic can come in, but must exit out.
And go a different direction.
Okay, we done with this?
I think so. I think we gave Tamika a nice letter to write.
And I can't, I can't believe the Z B A is gonna have a one night hearing on this.
Oh, God, well, considering ConCons ext- uh uh extend the hearing.
I would be surprised if we even heard back from Kevin by then.
Well, yeah, that could.
Well, Kevin's gonna look at um these two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven drawings, okay, this is a commercial installation with eleven drawings. Next. And three or four of those are basically templates. So. Again, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but that's what I would be saying.
Uh, short comment, uh, there's a Chick-fil-A in Whistler, it's unbelievably packed all the time, but they have. They have two, two lanes. There's a person taking your order by hand with a handheld device, you don't even order through a monitor or screen. Then you go to the next person, they check you out, then they don't even have a person inside, you don't reach through a window to get the food, there's someone that. Literally gives it to you from the window to your car, that's how busy they are, and that's just to keep their line moving, because they're that popular.
There's a burger place in Fort Wayne that does the same thing, because it makes more sense for the, the, it came down my, my niece worked there. And they could get more people through and make more money per.
Hiring.
Per hour by doing that than doing the old school of, you know, pull up and order at the talkie.
Yeah.
That was their philosophy, and I think if you look at McDonald's, that's the reason why they went to the dual lanes instead of the single that they had for decades. But anyhow.
Yeah. And one other quick comment, if it's okay, um, and I don't know if it would be within world, world character. Market thirty-two, um, West Mountain Street, at six o'clock, the lights changed to purple, I don't know if you've seen this design. But it's, I think it's for light pollution. It just keeps, or maybe an energy cost saving thing, but the lights go to a purple tone, purple and white, and it's just. It's not as bright, you know, for for that whole area, I don't know. If that, you know, with the new design, if they've ever, you know, not that it can really be included, but I mean, if if it's, if the place is gonna be lit up. Almost too strong, then there's ways to.
Take any apartment right beside it, you know, you had second.
Yeah.
Dunkin's isn't open past eight or nine o'clock, are they?
No.
Eight o'clock?
But I don't know if it's lit up.
So that was my question is, given the fact that it's a special permit and originally.
It was a site plan originally, believe it or not, that's what I just found in the documents that Tamika was saying.
So plus or minus, we can't enforce other than.
Their site plan, Britain, had had like orders of condition in it, which I've never seen that in a site plan before.
That means the applicant signed off on it, they're like, hey, we wanna get the project done, we'll agree to it.
Went to land court, and I think that's probably part of the land court decisions.
So there, so there are points where you can force a developer to just get to the table and say, alright, yeah.
Do this, or we're gonna keep this accord.
But to your point, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, light pollution, et cetera, if if I'm. I looked at the plan, they are proposing plantings between the 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 resident who's. Or the owner, I don't know if it's a resident or not, living there, and then between them, but that's not, you're talking about a building that's. Twenty-eight feet high, plus or minus, and then you've got eight foot shrubs, and then you've got drive, drive-through lights, you've got, so. Depending on, I, and I don't know if that's part of their package, are they asking for extended hours? I didn't see that in there. Again, that's something, that's something that could easily fly under the radar and be like, hey, yeah, no, you approved the site plan, and we said.
Twenty-four hour Dunkin's.
Yeah, we said, we said it was twenty-four.
When you leave here tonight, you can take a look and see how much traffic is on the road.
It's quiet after.
Would you like me to include that in the memo?
I would just confirm the hours, hours of operation, that would be one man's opinion.
The new, the new operate, the new, with this new design, what's their new operation hours?
Does the design include?
Twenty-four hours and it was.
A change in the hours of operation.
Well, you know how we can kill this, do twenty-five dollar an hour minimum wage, that'll kill us in hours.
I would love to say yes, but people will still pay for their Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, I know, this is mass Dunkin' and Starbucks. Thank God I don't drink coffee.
The new Starbucks in Holden.
That's gonna be.
Mr. Chairman, can we move on?
Yes. Please, please.
We didn't get to what we wanted.
Additional amendments to the subdivision rules and regulations.
I have one that I would really like to push.
Move to table?
The one I'd like to push is that, get that fire amendment in there as soon as we can with the chief. Cause I think that is a very valuable amendment that is easy to be put in.
Have him come to our next meeting and have a discussion?
I think John tempted if we had a public hearing scheduled for that, or some sort of discussion at the May fourteenth meeting. I remember you guys asked for him to be invited and you guys pushed it, so when John came back.
Get that in as soon as possible, because I've read that multiple times, and by gosh, that that probably should have been in years ago.
I'll confirm with John, but I think that's already on his docket.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, considering the hour, I'm kinda getting the feeling that nobody is ready to.
No.
Dive into these. Yes, no?
I'm, I'm, at eight o'clock, I'm sort of.
You could maybe say him, but yeah, whether we dig deep would be maybe for next time. It's up to you guys.
You know, I don't think we can do a ten to fifteen minute thing on this.
No, even if you took one section, it's gonna be.
I don't know, I think Dick could do fifteen minutes of damage.
Can we, and I know this is difficult, but we've really gotta set a meeting and just tell John that nothing else. Unless it's an A and R, which we're, by by we have to do.
Yeah.
Just, we need, and if it's after the town meeting, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
But I think we need to get through the town meeting, and then after that, we need to say one meeting, unless there's an A and R on the docket, we're gonna look at this.
I also think, and I'll defer to Tamika, but I think we can do an administrative meeting.
That's what, that's business meeting.
That's the business meeting.
Right, so I haven't seen one of those yet, so I don't know how you guys.
Neither have we in about eight years.
And I think it'd be a great idea to talk about things like, i.e. earlier tonight, you know, as a board.
Yeah.
Let's talk about it.
That's what we're gonna try to do tonight, Britain, in this thing, guys.
Also, also something I wanna get in there as quick as possible before the next subdivision comes in, it has to have low-income housing mixed in there. Cause we tried that once before.
I will tell you straight up, I'm a hundred percent with you. It's, it's gonna, it's gonna. It's gonna happen, it's gonna bite us.
State comes in and says, you are going to do this.
And then they're gonna, they're gonna shove a forty B down our throat, and everybody's gonna be like, what happened, where was the planning board, why didn't we get protected against this? And they're gonna say, well, because they approved all of the stuff and they didn't hold anybody to accountability on it, it's gonna happen.
What, was it Ju- Julian's or Craig Bacon's off of?
Loose Crossing.
Loose Crossing, thanks. We tried to get two or three in there, and it just didn't work.
We don't know what we're doing.
Yeah, that's true, you're, you're correct.
And we still don't, so I don't.
Oh, and that's why I feel that we should be getting involved.
We need to look at it.
Are there any months coming up that have a fifth Tuesday like this month does, and that where you could do it on that off Tuesday?
Probably will.
Is that where estate employees would get paid three times?
That'd be nice. Or unless you're open to another day during the week?
Tuesdays always my, Tuesday and Thursdays are the only days I can free up, Monday, Wednesday and Friday are my nightmares. Wednesday is the worst, I can make myself available with.
I'm just thinking, I know, obviously this tends to be the busy time of year, so you guys will probably still have a lot of stuff coming in over the next couple of months. So maybe if you choose one, like a night off of a regular meeting, then you would really be able to just focus on what you were doing. There is an extra Tuesday next week, I'm just throwing it out on the thirtieth. Oh, but no, you're going to the candidate night, so I take that back.
I would also defer it to the chairman, I mean, we do have, obviously, myself.
I know, I made that, how did that?
We have new, new persons on the board, so I think it would be good to have that. Offline meeting to where as a board, we can discuss sort of, you know, things change, right? Boards change, we have an election coming up, I don't, yeah, whatever, but. I think that shortly after that, we should have it administrate, again, sir, just, you know, for me.
Yeah, I'm just looking for feedback from John.
Tuesday in the lower room.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
Wood Studio, you know, not, it's not, you know.
Wood Studio's good. It's air conditioned, it's nice, there's, uh, there's a huge table there that we can spread everything out and talk. It's a great idea. Done. I'm in, just give me a heads up.
Let's wait till John gets back.
Uh, okay.
Night on in particular.
His correspondence is. He he took Norm our comments to heart. On the asphalt on Bryce Lemon.
Yeah.
I saw Cle's responses, I saw the memos, and third parties coming in to fix it.
And the only thing I took a look at today was Rice Lemon, and. They're still not really doing anything on Phase Two. Although they did, and I was there after we had the last rain. Was all the water in there, they were pumping it out.
Yeah.
It's dry now.
I went through Brittenell Estates, well, first, I had to drive through Arrowhead and make sure there was no property left open. And that's fact, and then I looked at the house that my wife and I were gonna buy, I'm going like, thank you, big guy upstairs, we didn't buy that house. We'd have been surrounded and had a, a nine-foot slope dropped off the side where. Mister Michelonis's beautifully built barn used to be. That's gone, um, but Brittenell Estates I drove through, and they've got a lot built there, so. I guess my question to the board is, since there have a lot of that. Houses either at the finish stage, when are we gonna get our crossings finished, cause they are not finished? So I guess I I wanna ask that question, and that's maybe more for John, but I wanna bring it before the board. The crossings aren't finished, yet the houses are done, and people are gonna be driving through there.
Yeah.
And there's a way to go off on the side without it being finished.
Yeah.
And I just thought the board should maybe have John get a letter to Cle and say, get her done. That's my opinion.
Do we have any control mechanisms for that? I I I know that Cle knows, and like, he's gonna get, he's gonna answer that letter, but.
It would be, it would be a safety factor.
Yes.
Well, because it's, there's gonna be more blocks. Keep kids from jumping off.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
You know, it gets busy over there during Fourth of July, and it's dark, I don't think they really have streetlights down there, so yeah, it would be. Wouldn't be hard not to have something happen.
We could fix that by putting streetlights.
No, 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 no.
No, just the purple ones, no, stop it. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Yeah, I just, when I drove through that, that's the thing that jumped out at me, cause I had cars behind me and I pulled off, and I get up there and. Literally, the the blocks maybe come up to my tire and that's it. And if if, again, now it's probably not gonna be an issue, but in six months, when we start getting the ice and stuff back, and you've got. Fifteen, twenty houses there with maybe teenagers driving around, I really think that should be finished.
Yeah, wanna skid out, yeah, you're right.
That's just.
Me to ask John to follow up with Cle?
I, to the chair, I think we should.
I think that's, that's not a bad idea, yeah.
That's it, other than that, the roads looked good, uh, the site, I went to the end of the road onto Brittenell. I didn't like that I didn't have a lot of line of sight on my right, cause there was that.
Yeah.
That bothered me a lot, cause I couldn't see a car coming, Norm.
I know.
I can look up, I can see everything coming down at me, but when I turned and looked right, I literally couldn't see but three feet around that bend. That's a question I was gonna ask, cause that's what we wanted to get away from, from the.
Wouldn't take much. With the mound.
All I gotta do is put a little, little swale in it, baby.
Depends on where his.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if we can ask that or not, because to me, it was a site, traffic site issue.
Yeah.
Safety concern.
If they, if if it meets what they designed, it would be on Cle to just do it out of understanding that he has a potential issue. But if we signed off on it, the building department signed off on it.
We can't make him.
No, it was, I'm just looking for an ass, because I, I was just looking from a standpoint, when I pulled up there. Our goal to get away from that secondary thing is you couldn't see either way.
Yeah, and there's, there's, there's nothing against making a recommendation from the chairman of the board and saying, hey, just check this out. It could be a potential issue, but other than that, it's.
I, only reason, Britain, I I was even gonna bring it up, cause it didn't look like it was gonna be, you know, it wasn't a lot of money to fix it. And make it look good for the, the occupants that were gonna live in there and have to drive in and out.
Unless we have an ass belt that says something different than what he built.
Look at that, doesn't hurt, doesn't hurt the look. Have John take a look at it and see if there's.
I don't think there's anything shown on the plan.
Well, the ass belt would be the approved plan, plus an engineer signing off that they built per plan.
Yeah.
You don't necessarily need a perfect survey to show it. So for, as an example, if the slope is, you know, three to one, as you well know, and it's, but you drive there and it's five to one. That's not what was approved, then, then, then we could ask.
And this is just a little mound, it's, it's not on the physical road, it's sort of in what I would call the right of way of the road, but.
I don't know, I'm just playing devil's advocate, I'm not trying to, you know, stir the pot, so.
It's the kind of thing that we probably can get him to do something about.
Yeah. That's it.
Okay.
Started about ass belts.
Can we do ass belts, Dick?
No.
That's quick, real quick.
We, we've tried.
Yeah.
At before, because they've gotta give us something before they get the road accepted in town. The, the problem I have is I'm used to an ass belt of an entire subdivision, what they do with roads is they do the section of the road. So somebody has to put that all together.
Yeah, which is absolutely fine, and it's, it's still required by many municipalities, even for subdivisions. So subdivision control law, it's absolutely within our, within our purview to request that.
That's why I think that, that's part of the modification of the meeting.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our.
Yeah.
Yes, but the son of ass belt pan, plans that we. Yes, but the son of Asbeld pan- plans that we got had the sewer in the wrong place and a few other things that were.
And that's on this, that's that's on the stamping engineer. I I I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to get down in that rabbit hole, but.
No, but you know the.
Yeah, that's. And that's a big problem if you have someone stamping shit that isn't in the right spot. It's a bigger red flag than. And that's. Whatever, but.
Since you brought that up, I love, I love you.
I'm sorry.
You just freaking willy wigged. The the state, remember I brought up? Um, some engineers stamping drawings, but they have experience. Well, the state has redefined a professional engineer stamp and they have to have experience and training. To be able to say they can stamp something that's not in their purview. So if an electrical engineer wants to stamp mechanical drawings, I gotta prove that I have training and experience in that. Before it was, if you have some, uh, you've done it. It wasn't really specific, but the new, if I'm not mistaken, the newer updated stamp has a little bit more definition to it. And that's something we could ask John to look into, just to make sure anybody stamping our drawings that we're getting. You know, like if a mechanical stamps a civil drawing, I wanna make sure he's got some civil training.
Please make a memo.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Item nine, any other discussion not reasonably anticipated within forty-eight?
So is you. Yeah, I really. This, that's why I asked Mark to stay. I I really would like the board to reconsider. It's. Positive. Uh, recommendation for the citizens petition for that. Um, T TC two ground. I just, we had a lot of talk and I don't wanna go back into it. I just want the board to think about this. We can up to the, up to the town meeting, since we typically have a meeting at the town, make a. Oh, but that's gonna be on the rec, you guys are gonna put that in, so we need to do that tonight, don't we? Well, I guess what I'm, I'm really asking the board to reconsider tonight is pulling back that positive recommendation. For that citizens petition and go with a uh, no recommendation or no action. That's what I'm asking. But I wanna talk about it before I make a motion.
I would agree with that, and I think one of the things I would like to discuss is, you know, what I had mentioned before was having a business meeting. To 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 review that um, more in depth. I'm not saying, I wasn't, I may have portrayed a couple of things, I wasn't against what he was doing, it's his right to do it. Um, as a citizen and he checked all of the legal requirements to do so. But it really circumvents the purpose of the board and why we're elected to do so. Again, it's a legal mechanism, I'm not saying he shouldn't do it, what I'm saying is as a board, we should have. We should want to have to review these things before. Just issuing a yes, we approve it, or yes, we we approve the action. I think it should go through a lot of checks and balances, there's, this is just one man's opinion.
Britten, that's the reason why I don't agree with signing on to citizens petitions, because again, I have no problem with legal rights to do that. That's, that's.
You're within, you're a hundred percent.
But we have a, a planning board and a bylaw subcommittee, and if you want something changed, if you wanna add a property to C TC two. There's a process to go through.
There is, there's a workaround, it's not a workaround, that's a bad word, but there is, it's called citizens petition. Where you just go and you say, hey, I need ten signatures. You need forty to get elected, but you need ten to change a law. So, I just, that's where I struggle with it, it's like we shouldn't really be, you know. Again, maybe a business meeting, but. I'm not really gonna ever sign off on anything, you know, we went through the first one and I, and and I, it 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 just, it killed me, I went home, I thought about it. And I was like, no, this is, this is gonna come one after the other. Hey, I live right next to this zone, oh, this is your zoning, but I live right here. He lives right here. Why don't I get it? And then the next one, why don't I get it? Why don't I get it? Why don't I get it? And just. There is, and 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 to the chairman's point, there is something very important about consistency, but I believe wholeheartedly. We are allowed as a board to change our position once we understand the facts and where those decisions are going. For the betterment of Roland. And and again, we may disagree on that, and that's fine. But my personal opinion is, I'm not, I'm not a big fan of that process, so I'm I'm probably never gonna sign off on it.
That's, and and Norm, that's one of the reasons I'm bringing this back up, is I just. From a personal standpoint, I thought it was good, but when I thought about it from the board's standpoint, I made a bad decision. And I don't, I can't, I can't live with it, so I wanna change it. That's why I wanted to bring it back to the board. I'll live with whatever decision the board makes, but me personally.
Yeah, a hundred percent, that's why we're here.
Yeah, I I cannot support citizens petitions. I I mean, I might, I I agree with both of them, I I. Me personally, as this, I think it's a great, great, but from a board's perspective, I don't think we should make a recommendations on citizens petition. Cause to Britten's point, it didn't go through the quote process, that we would have normal. Changes to our bylaws or to our um, or or to our um, yeah, to the bylaws, to zoning bylaws. So that's the only reason I wanted to discuss this before I made a motion. Screen's gone.
Down for painting.
Cause notice there's no white uh. Yeah, all gone. So, I just, and the other thing I I wanted to bring up about that area is I went and looked at the map. And we were talking about, well, maybe we could get the condos to come into TC. Actually, they're, the whole condo is own business.
Yeah, it is, it is.
It's not, it's not part of TC, it's got its own business district, so. We're jumping over the business district and putting a TC two zone there and I, that's where I just. The and and to Britten's point, he can do, the the applicant, he can do that, I'm fine with that. I just don't think the board should support it, I think they should go with the no recommendation.
I'm just, you you know, once again, I can, I'm still coming back to policy. And uh, I just had another weird, weird twist in my mind. Please, I need another one. We we could, actually, I think, make a policy on citizens petitions. Do we either make no recommendation or an unfavorable one? That way, if something comes up that we don't like, we can make an unfavorable recommendation. And if it's anything else, we just don't make a recommendation at all.
I'm. Somewhat okay with that. I just. I I again, I just like Norm the, the the FICOM's solution of being neutral. Because it's citizen. I neither approve or disapprove of it, I'm just being neutral. And I know it's Switzerland all over, but that's sort of how I feel. I mean, cause there's probably some I'm not gonna agree with, with citizens petitions, but I'd rather, I hate using the word consistent, but. I always worry about that, that precedent.
We wanna be consistent, so long as we have an accurate representation of what's happening in the town. That's where we can't get carried away and say, well, we've approved this since ninety-eight, so now we gotta sign off on all of them. That's, I I agree, nobody here thinks that's reasonable. But. I do agree consistency is important. But we have to define what we wanna be consistent and 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 what our metrics are to be consistent in that decision. And that's my, that's my only thing in agreement with with Tim and and Mr. Chairman is. I wouldn't say that we either do this or that, we can leave it to where it's, we still vote on it and we have a discussion about it. My personal opinion would be, we have a business meeting about it, I mean, we're having it now, but um, in a public hearing, but. Just to make sure that we all are on the same page with what the ramifications are of approving and denying. Not necessarily which way you're gonna vote, that's up to you, as a board member, but. Understanding what that, what that, what that means and what it's encouraging. Is 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 my biggest issue. The the amount of petitions we're gonna see come through and it's like, well. You know, yeah, this is your zoning, but I'm right here. Wait, 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 you did three others, they're on this side, so you, you're not gonna do me? That's where you get caught up in the, in the silliness of it.
I I don't really see an awful lot of that coming. You never know.
If you need ten signatures to get approved zoning. I can do forty, forty homes A and R, and I don't need, all I need to do is get ten signatures and have it go to town.
Did you, I'm just curious, not that it really makes any difference, but did you look at the names on this? All family.
Hey, you know what, bud? It checks the legal box. But that's, but that's, but that's what I'm saying, you're talking about ten signatures. You're talking about ten signatures to change spot zoning, that's, cause that's what we're talking about, we're talking about spot zoning. We're not talking about, hey, there's, there's this whole street of problems.
Let's fix it.
Let's fix it, or it'd be more advantageous to the town. What we're talking about is, no, my lot should be changed. Because now I can build four condominiums and two commercial spaces instead of two townhomes. That's honestly, gentlemen, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, no, no, that's, that's why I asked the question, what, what, what's the plans for it, thinking maybe I might get an answer.
You won't, you'll get, well, once it's approved, my by right is, now I've got. Four single family units or four multifamily units and two commercial units. And I don't have to listen to any of you.
So again, that's, that's the reason why I wanted to bring this up and I, sorry for taking, I just, I I couldn't live with this anymore, I needed to get it out. And and I I, again, I talked to my wife, I said, so I gotta figure out what, what's the FICOM? She goes, R is always on citizens petitions. No, no actions or no recommendations, that that's what we just do. Uh, on on any warrant that's a citizens petition. I said, well. I think that as a board, we should be doing the same thing.
Comment would be, um, it seems like we've, we've learned from it. You know, so do, do you go back or do you just go forward, you know, in a, in a way to say, well, you know. Should we, does it go back on a principle of of something we? Obviously, there's, there's stipulations of why we definitely don't wanna do it in the future, so.
If I can correct a mistake, I wanna correct a mistake, that's, that's me.
You don't wanna be mistaken consistently.
But something like this, we we can do with just a vote of our. Members and that's it, and it's okay, because. We are elected and it doesn't have to go before anybody else, it's just us.
I just wanna fix something that I, I don't believe, I don't believe in, I guess that's the best way to say it. And it's, it's before it goes into paper, and it's before it goes before the town. I I don't, I don't wanna do like with the wood type where I found out from council, didn't know that we could refer back to committee. And the only reason I found out is cause I was watching CNN the night before and saw the Senate refer it back to committee and going, why the hell can't we do that?
Called Robertson's Rules of Order, everybody follows it.
Nobody had done that before with with our board. And I went and asked, um, I can't think of the attorney's name, she's phenomenal. Yes, and Amy said, Tim, of course you can do that. And I come running back to the board, I've got a solution. So instead of doing it that night on the floor, I wanted to bring it to before the board now. And and see what the thoughts were, and I'll make a motion if if that's what, if that's what the straw vote of the board is.
I don't think we can, cause we're in public comment, but.
So you can make, you can make a motion to rescind the favorable recommendation.
But not now.
Cause you're not, so you can, because you're not talking about the substance of. The he- the hearing, you're talking about the action that you took after you closed the hearing. You're not talking about the petition itself.
That's a slippery slope.
I would, I defer to you, gentlemen, on that.
Oh, we definitely can. Vote to change our recommendation.
Cause legitimately, we don't even need to make a recommendation, we could have done nothing.
Well, we 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 are allowed to do that right up until it comes to a.
Are we not?
Town meeting floor.
And I'm playing advocate here, right, devil's advocate, if you will, gentlemen. We had him in here as as a pub, as a part of the public hearing with a notification for public hearing. Now we are talking about. Our final decision on something that we had already voted on.
So the slippery slope here is that it was not an item on the agenda. So. Technically speaking, Robert's rule says that you can vote to add it to the agenda and then vote on it. With that being said, Mark could still come back and say, I didn't know that the board was going to vote on this again.
Do we have a meeting before the town meeting?
No, your next one is May fourteenth.
Could call an emergency meeting.
It's not unheard of.
You don't have a subcommittee meeting?
Tomorrow. Seven o'clock.
Would we have any issues with?
Had it posted.
If we were to defer to another meeting. Meaning we would have to.
I don't know that you wanna re, cause then you're talking about reopening the hearing. I don't know that.
Technically, aren't we? We're talking about reopening something that we voted on. We closed that hearing.
So you closed the hearing, you voted after the hearing, so the vote is separate, but if there was gonna be any discussion at all about the. Content of the citizens petition, you would need to reopen the hearing.
But the vote had nothing to do with the hearing, the hearing was just a requirement of ours for a citizens petition. The applicant asked if you would give a favorable recommendation. On the citizens petition.
To which we said yes. I don't know, I feel like we're getting on a slippery slope there.
The other challenge is.
We're basically reopening a, a hearing that we voted on, technically we didn't, but.
So the other challenge is that, um, John had provided a memo on behalf of the board. Stating the favorable recommendation, which was provided to the select board and the finance committee when they finalized the warrant and made the recommendations. They've seen it, the warrant has been technically finalized, with the exception of waiting on tonight to see if you had a recommendation. That's the only.
It's a heavy lift, Mr. Chairman. The crown is very heavy.
Call it a mistake and let it go. I would.
With that being said, it doesn't prevent you from getting up and speaking on the floor at town meeting if you, if you felt strongly enough that you wanted the residents to know.
Think after that would be a good way to continue.
I just, again, I'm a, I'm one, if I can fix a mistake, I wanna fix it. But again, I'm with, whatever the board wants to do, I will follow, cause I, that's the way I feel.
We could technically open it. Now, and then say. No action. Close it, we're not denying it, which could be another issue.
The only thing is, it's not on the agenda.
I'd say, let, Mr. Chairman, let it ride.
Not not being on the agenda, to me, that.
It's been, it's been voted on, we've closed it, at that point it becomes.
Alright, I'm good with that, I.
I'm with you, though.
I've been, it's been eating at me for two weeks and I'm like, it was a wrong thing, I should have, should have voted my con- conscience instead of uh.
So do we have a meeting tomorrow night?
Well, we're supposed to, but it's nowhere on the agenda, I'm, I I swore that it was, it's upstairs.
Posted today.
What's that?
I didn't see any notifications that anything was posted.
Gave everything to John, I even sent him the agenda.
When did you send it to him?
Three weeks ago, four weeks, three weeks ago.
Oh boy.
It's not on the calendar?
Nope, I don't see anything on the calendar. Well, the, we have a room, but no, they even had it up there, because when I called to ask for a room. Um, she said you can't do six or six thirty, cause the Girl Scouts have it till seven, I go, ah, seven to eight or nine, we can.
I'll eat about six forty-five, we buy a bunch of cookies, we have a great meeting.
So I think, um, I will have to, I've got one scheduled for May. I'm frustrated, cause I wanted to get this one.
Moving onward, public comment, do we have any?
We ran the out.
Don't forget.
Hey. My understanding is, it's just candidates that are in contend, contended.
So I talked to Randy, he said, anybody is welcome to come speak, but the focus is gonna be on the seats that are contested, which I believe, um.
Just the select board, right?
Just select board at school committee.
School committee. School committee, okay.
And also, just wanted to show people, this is, this is, uh. It's a trailer.
Wait, what?
It's a trailer. It's a deck on a trailer, and there's gonna be a greenhouse put on top of it, and I just want you people to know. That the egg commission is doing this.
What the hell are you gonna be doing there, Mr. Marijuana?
Uh, no, this is.
Is that the one with the, the Norfolk Aggie that they're doing?
That is correct, the egg commission down in Norfolk is, is doing it.
Is that the workaround for a permanent structure?
It's gonna stay on the wheels, it's gonna stay on the wheels.
I heard wheels on the bus before, I know.
He did a citizens petition, so it's okay.
Sweet, there you go. Attaboy. It's on your property, or?
No, no, it's gonna.
At the school, right?
It's gonna be going to the Glenwood School and/or the senior, um.
Council.
Something like that, but it's made to go for different schools, for them kids to learn how to grow, period.
Right to farm.
And, and it's in memory of my father, so.
Well, I guess I, I can't find, this is maybe a verbal conversation.
I know we're closing quickly, but I do have a question, if we, it, so, Nick is a write-in, if we put Dick Williams, is that. Is that the vote, or does it have to be?
I sent the letter to Anita. And, uh, Charles, Richard Williams, Richard Williams, Dick Williams, AKA.
They're all the same.
All the same, Anita's got it, and so it can be written any which way, but it's somebody puts down here, there's nobody else on there.
Yeah.
Ask Paul Williams, she'll know who it is.
Okay.
That's not gonna be.
She'll get it cleared, okay, got it.
Got some docs for you.
Oh, yes, John wanted, said you requested those.
Yes, I did. Thank you.
I'll entertain the final motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.